I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV will be conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Councilor Walsh, would you lead us into the flag?
Certainly will. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Walsh?
Here.
President Zerella?
Here.
Councilor Boishman?
President.
Councilor Kuchar?
Here.
Councilor Cregan?
Here.
Councilor Cruz?
Here.
Councilor Deena Tally?
Here.
Councilor Fleming?
Councilor Green?
Here.
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Councilor Van Hazingen?
Here.
We have 10 members present.
Thank you very much. I'm given to understand we have one person registered on Zoom for public comment. If they are present and ready to speak, please put them through. Ms. Yadlon, you may unmute yourself and please identify your city of residence, the item on which you wish to speak, and then you will have two minutes to speak.
Yes, hi. Christine Yadlon, 351 Cathy Street. I'm here to observe, and I am totally against the solar farm on Shea Street, Oak Hill Country Club.
All right. We will... Did you have any further comment you'd like to make on that or just observing?
I'm observing. Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome. All right. Can I just ask you to mute yourself again, just so we don't get any background noise as we go along? Thank you. All right. We have three people signed up for comment. Chris Matinzi?
Appointments.
Oh, was that Appointments? Okay, not present. Ms. Wechi?
Jacqueline Wechi, Pittsburgh resident, 184-24. We have a crime problem. The police department tries to disguise some of it by looking at five-year averages to include a crime spike in 2019, but if you don't do that and compare 2023 to 2022, you see how bad it is. Property crime is up 35%. Motor vehicle theft, 21%. Burglaries are up. Larceny is up 63%. Violent crime up 22%. Yet arrests were down 1.64%. So they either aren't catching them or they don't arrest them. These are real issues for residents, and the public should be involved in the selection of the next police chief. CDBG funds for community policing should be increased. In-town funds should go for that fence Councilor Boishman wants. But instead, we waste a lot of money on things like garish signs and murals, or $280,000 for people to flip burgers and bake cakes. We need to stop being the social services hub for the region which attracts addicts and vagrants. There's a reason Lemonster didn't want to host the Monticello Public Health Network or the Outreach Team.
Ms. Wechi, those are not on the agenda. Only the police report is what you're commenting on?
Well, that leads to crime, and we're carrying the burden for the entire region. We also need an anti-camping ordinance modeled on Boston's. It says if you are offered a place in a shelter and refuse it, you have to move along. Then we need to send the migrants Maura Healy sent us back to her, so there is room in the shelters for our local unhoused. Let's get at the root causes of crime to prevent it.
Ms. Laxo?
Good evening. I'm Charlene Laxo, Gloria Ave. I'd like to speak to Petition 18324, and on behalf of the Shea Street Neighborhood Group, I'd like to thank you for your support of this petition. It's an example of local government at its best. Elected officials listening to and working with residents on an issue that affects everyday life. We realize that you are going to be limited as to what you can do because of state restrictions, but we appreciate your willingness to address this issue. So we look forward to what will transpire within the next few months. And I might add that through our research of solar ordinances of various cities and towns in Western and Central Mass, we've accumulated a great deal of information, which we'd be more than happy to pass along if you're interested. So once again, thank you for your ongoing efforts on this issue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to make public comment? If so, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak.
I'm not sure now is the appropriate time, but I'd like to just give a rebuttal to Ms. Winchi. I can do it when you call.
Yeah, we can do it when we call the report.
I just want to have an opportunity to review.
Oh, you'll have ample opportunity to speak to it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, announcements. The next three meetings of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, October 17th, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street, with Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz co-facilitating. Then Thursday, October 24th, 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. in the fireplace room of the Pittsburgh Senior Center, Bonnie Shaler and Bernie Schultz co-facilitating. And Thursday, October 31st, 4:00 until 5:30 p.m., Room 205 at the Recreation Center, 130 North Street, with Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz. Author Grant Leera will discuss his new book, Finding Fanny, at the Pittsburgh Historical Society, 781 Main Street. This Saturday, October 19th, at 1:00 p.m. Grant Leera is the great-grandson of our past mayor Alfred Woolocott, and also related to two other Pittsburgh mayors, and has written a book on... Sorry, I'm jumping around in my paragraphs here. Has written a book on Fannie Woolocott Johnson, her husband Dean E. Johnson, and his second wife Janet Louise Murphy. Fanny was the younger sister of Mayor Alfred Woolocott. And this program is free to the public. It is part of the Pittsburgh Open Studios Weekend Celebration taking place October 19th and 20th, 2024. For more information, please contact the Pittsburgh Historical Society at 978-345-1157, or at director@fitzhburghistoricalsociety.com, or www.fitchburghistoricalsociety.com. The annual Community Health Resource Fair will be held on Thursday, October 17th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Pittsburgh Armory, also known as the Senior Center. The Community Health Resource Fair is an opportunity for residents to visit over 70 different information tables representing a wide variety of local services. Participants include housing, shelter, elder services, medical care, youth services, mental health, substance use disorder, veteran services, as well as many cultural offerings, plus participation by city departments including health, fire, police, library, schools, community development, emergency management, and others. There will also be residents... Sorry, representatives from the offices of State Senator John Cronin, State Rep. Michael Kuschmerich, and District Attorney Joseph D. Early Jr. As you can tell, it's a fairly extensive event with a lot of information and resources On Friday, October 25th, there will be a haunted house on Main Street from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 14 Wallace Ave, which, again, is the Armory/Senior Center. It'll be $5 per entry. There is a parental advisory. This will be, you know, a scary Halloween event, not a fun-friendly Halloween event, although I hope a lot of people will have fun there as well. Not kid-appropriate, in other words. And this is part of Pittsburgh's downtown Halloween celebrations. There will also be, on the same date, Friday, October 25th, Broadway Karaoke from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Main Street Studios, 569 Main Street in Pittsburgh. This is from the Pittsburgh Cultural Alliance. And last, but certainly not least, the Tuesday, November 5th elections are only weeks away. In-person early voting begins on Saturday, October 19th, and goes through Friday, November 1st, at City Hall in the main lobby, or off of the main lobby. Hours are posted on the City Clerk's website. The last day to register to vote for the November 5th election is Saturday, October 26th, at City Hall, from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 29th is the last day to request a mail-in ballot for the November 5th election. And Monday, November 4th, at 12:00 noon, is the deadline to apply for an absentee ballot for the November 5th election. Polls will be open on Tuesday, November 5th, from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And you can check your polling locations, I believe, on the city website, as well as, I believe, the Secretary of State's website. And I'll just say, as always, I'm sure it will be very, very efficiently and pleasantly run. Next, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kuchar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Appointments Committee met. We took up three new appointments and two reappointments, all of which were approved unanimously.
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion and second. On the motion, Councilor Boishman.
I just wanted to tell you, Mr. President, and to my fellow city councilors, that if you notice somebody that retired from the city of Pittsburgh is coming to the park board in wastewater, and he told me that the reason why he came back is he liked working with me, and he had a lot of fun. I just wanted you to know that. So I want to say thank you.
And he's a politician, so you can trust everything he tells you.
I make the motion when you're set.
All right. So I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Appointments Committee. Any objections? It is unanimously approved. A report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, President Zerella. I just wanted to make a couple of comments because we've had some questions about the Records Committee. The Records Committee only reviews city council meeting minutes, whether it's a committee, council as a whole, or a regular city council meeting. That's what we review. Open meeting law does not govern the method for approving minutes. Public bodies can choose any method that they want. And with that in mind, we have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Make the motion when you're set.
Second? I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Committee on Records. Any objections? It is unanimously approved. We have communications from Her Honor, the mayor. Three new appointments, one reappointment. New appointment of Jason Lefferts as a member of the Pittsburgh Water/Wastewater Commission, term to expire November 6th, 2028. Nicholas Cordio to the position of municipal hearing officer for a term of one year with an evaluation after six months. Michael Baltier as a member of the Pittsburgh Human Rights Commission, term to expire November 5th, 2027. And a reappointment of David Roth as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire May 1st, 2027. Those all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Next, we have 18424, the annual report of the Pittsburgh Police Department. Before I have the chief up to speak to us briefly, or however long he'd like, but to speak to us on the contents of the report, I'd like to request consent to waive the formal reading of the report and place it on file with the Clerk's office. All right, I'll take that by unanimous consent, seeing no objection. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. It's an honor tonight to stand in front of you and present my 10th and final annual report of the Pittsburgh Police Department. I'd like to begin by responding to the comments made earlier by one of our citizens on a bleak view of the city of Pittsburgh. I couldn't disagree with that comment more than ever at this point. We have seen a drastic reduction in criminal activity in the city of Pittsburgh over the last 10 to 15 years. What I bring to the council is 36 years of experience patrolling the streets of Pittsburgh and seeing where we have come in the last 36 years. More importantly, selfishly, the last 10 years, as I, as your chief of police. My annual report gives a five-year historical look. If I could give you a 10-year historical look, I would show a reduction across the board in all of our reportable crimes throughout the city. We only go back five when it's reported through the FBI and NIBUS, so that's why you're seeing a five-year reduction. I was just commenting to captains today at work that we have seen such a reduction in criminal activity in the city of Pittsburgh over the last 10 years, we were bound to hit a year where there would be an increase. I give this one example. Prior to becoming chief, I ran the detective bureau. It was common that we would respond to 200 to 400 breaks into people's homes on a yearly basis. If you look at this annual report, we had 86 this year. We've gone from 400 down to 86. Now, make no mistake about it, the city of Pittsburgh is an urban city, we're a large city, and with a large city comes issues, whether they're issues relative to crime or social services. We tackle them head-on. I think we've put programs in place that have helped reduce the reduction what you're seeing in this annual report. Efforts that we've put forward on domestic violence advocacy, efforts we put towards crisis intervention about helping people that are in crisis. These programs that we put forth during my tenure have helped reduce the activity that we're reporting. I can stand before you, not only as a resident of this city, but as the police chief and someone that's worked here for 36 years, I feel very safe in the city. And I want to reflect that to the people that are watching tonight, that the city of Pittsburgh is, yes, it's a city, but I believe that we are in a much better place than we were five, 10, 15 years ago. I really see that the city of Pittsburgh has finally turned the corner. We have a very young police department, a very energetic police department. We're in the process of choosing my successor. I feel very confident that the future is bright for the city. And when I hear comments that are so bleak about the city, I take that personally. And I would like to assure the public that, please, this annual report will be on the city website tomorrow. Please go to our website, look at this, and you make the determination. There's a lot more between these pages than just the 4% increase in criminal activity. It shows everything that we do on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis at the police department. One comment was made about a decrease in the amount of arrests. That's true. Our arrest numbers have gone down. When I was a young patrolman, it was common that we make 2,000 to 3,000 arrests per year. Those numbers are not even a third of that today. Why? Because we're looking for other alternatives. We're not just throwing people in jail. We're working because of police reform about crisis intervention, looking for other alternatives to incarceration. I think those programs have helped the city over the last 10 years make this type of reduction. I'm very proud of this report. I'm very proud of the work that the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department do each and every day. I'm extremely grateful to my analysis, Kristy Fisher, who is the author of this. And like I said, this will be on the city website tomorrow. I urge residents, if you have time, go through it. If you have questions, call my office. Please come in and see me. Come in and see one of my captains. I'd be happy to talk about any part of this report right here. Each councilor received an electronic version of this. If you prefer to have a hard copy, please let me know. I do have one for you, Councilor Boishman, because I know you like it. But that being said, my 10th and final one, I couldn't be prouder of where we are today. The city, it's not bleak. We have a wonderful city, and it's our honor to police this city. Be happy to take any questions regarding this report, or if you want to call me later on this week, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I will take any questions or comments from councilors. Councilor Green?
Chief, I would like to personally just commend you on the efforts that you've made, especially making strides with the social-emotional component that you've addressed head-on from 10 years ago and probably beyond, but the 10 years that I'm speaking about, being on council, where you have made it a mission to... When somebody is in the process of having a mental health crisis, rather than showing up with force, you show up with a police force that is compassionate and caring and being able to offer further service to those in crisis. So I want to personally commend you and your team's effort in that approach. And then working with some of our local judges, we found that not every crime deserves to have people thrown in jail. So again, I commend the way the reform has happened and how we're moving forward as an urban city to address that.
Thank you. Councilor Jeanne Holly?
Sadly, chief, what you're saying tonight, most of the public's not going to hear, because everything's through this, filtered by dishonest people who have been part of this city's politics for years. I have a Facebook page of 3,000 followers, and I have put the crime statistics up for the last 15 years. And of course, because of the intellectual laziness that our society is today, every time I put up the stats of what you just said, I was accused of, oh, it's because of who the mayor is, that's why you're writing these things. They didn't look at the information, because that would require effort. And they listen to people who pretend that they care about the future of this city when they really only care about themselves. And so for the last several years, the public has been led to believe things about our city that aren't true, that we're not business-friendly, that crime is bad. Data doesn't say that. I'm a data analyst. It doesn't say any of that. But if someone writes it on their computer every day with thousands of people looking, they'll just listen to that person. It's very... I'm angry talking about it, because what you said is what I've been saying for 10 years. And sadly, most people are not going to hear this, because the perception is the biggest People don't want to dive into the details and read for themselves what the facts are. They just listen to unscrupulous politicians who are in it for themselves. I'm not talking about anybody on this council, but they know who I'm talking about. And so, I don't know, maybe now that that individual's in charge of the city, maybe this will get plastered everywhere, because it was never plastered anywhere the last eight years. Be that as it may, the work that your staff has done under these trying times, especially for police officers, is commendable. And you were allowed the freedom and the leeway to run your office the way you have, where there's been a lot more community engagement, there's been a lot more involvement of your officers connecting with members of the community. And, you know, Pittsburgh has a bad reputation historically over the last 40 or 50 years. People still can't grasp that where we are today as a city is not where we were in the early 2000s. It's far from perfect, but I recall vividly the early 2000s, as I'm sure you do. We're not even close to there. As you said, one year of an increase, and it's a modest, it's a minor increase, does not hide the fact that for the last 10 years, we've had precipitous declines. So you need to take the whole report in its totality, where year over year may be beneficial to certain people, but the body of work over a five- or 10-year period shows that whatever the stats are today, they are precipitously lower than where they were 10 years ago. And we'll do all we can to report that out, but I'm not confident that it's going to reach most people. I mean, that's just my bleak view of things being... I would consider myself an expert on social media usage. It's not going to register, because people are predisposed to being negative, and being negative is easy. So it's great news, but I'm a defeatist right now, because I don't think most people are going to even know about it. Hopefully, I'll be wrong. And I'm not disparaging the report. I'm just saying, I'm a realist here. It's bothersome to me, because every day I deal with it, people saying things about the crime in this city that isn't true, just not. But they don't want to listen to it. So, I mean, it just, it stinks.
Well, quite frankly, I don't work for social media.
Yep.
I work for each one of you, and I work for the 42,000 people that call Pittsburgh home. And I say, with 36 years of experience, home is much better than it was many years ago. And I'm very proud of that.
So am I. Yep. And I hope people will get... They will learn about this and be happy of where they live, and have pride in where they live. So keep doing what you're doing, because it's not lost on us. And I'll do my best to keep publishing as much as I can reach to show the good work that you men and women are doing every day.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Cregan?
Thank you. Chief, I was so glad to see that you were listed on our agenda tonight. I'm really pleased to hear the statistics. I remember, having grown up here, but having lived outside of this area in the 90s, when things were, you know, really different. And that's kind of when we had a turning point, and it takes a while to kind of right the ship. And I have to say that I was completely impressed by your representatives at the open house at the sheriff's office today. There are so many more layers of help that are effective for deterrence, for rehabilitation, for helping people get the right services for mental illness, which is at the root of just so many crimes. And, you know, working in concert with the schools, working with the Board of Health. I mean, I just pulled out Christina Beliveau's Co-Response Crisis Clinician card, and I can't imagine having a card like this, you know, even 20 years ago. But you're presiding over such a crucial piece that does affect everyone's lives and has the, you know, has the result of keeping the village safe. And that's a lot of responsibility, but my sense of slowing down when there's a detail or, you know, hearing from you tonight, is that there's forward momentum, and I'm hearing from you that that is, you know, that that's valid, and it's backed up by numbers. And I will do my best to share that information as well, Marcus. I am happy to share, you know, social media, Sentinel, what have you. So thank you.
You're welcome. This report is transparency at its finest. The Pittsburgh Police Department is an open book, and it's an open book for everybody to see, not only in this annual report, but everything that happens in that building. And we're constantly, constantly looking for best practices in law enforcement. So they're always changing, always changing. Our legislators, our elected officials, the playbook changes constantly. And one thing I can say is, we've always, always, always have looked for best practices on how to police this city in the finest fashion.
Councilor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, chief, for 36 years of service in the last 10 as chief of our department. Overall, I share the sentiments of some of my councilors regarding the overall improvements that we've seen. I think it's... We're definitely moving forward, especially with the progress that your department has made in light of much greater public scrutiny and the changes that you've made in the face of that. I really applaud you. But some of the things that are disconcerting to me are the larceny, the increase in larceny, and especially the increase in domestic violence. Is it fair to say that... Because you mentioned that you do things sort of geographically, and you monitor those things. Is it fair to say that most of these occurrences are in low-income communities, or do you see them all over?
That's hard to say. I'd like to comment on the larcenies. There was an increase in larcenies. We're seeing larcenies be committed at an alarming level by youthful offenders. And the whole gamebook has changed on how we handle youthful offenders. Through police reform, through recent police legislation, that's handled much differently. reform, through recent police legislation, that's, that's handled much differently. A lot of those larcenies are also preventable larcenies, where we encourage people to lock their doors. The majority of them are crimes of opportunity. Where you see the increase in these larcenies, they're all crimes of opportunity where, you know what, if some of us just lock our car door at night, the crime doesn't happen. So that's one of the reasons behind the increase in larcenies. Domestic violence, that has always been, you know, at the forefront of what we do. With domestic violence comes a whole list of things of reasons why. You know, we've been very fortunate to employ a domestic violence advocate for the last 15 years. A lot of departments don't have that luxury. You know, the amount of advocacy that we provide victims of domestic violence is second to none. That's just one of those crimes that, you know, we're reliant on emotions. And that's always going to be at the top of the list, no matter what city or town you're in. But the one thing that's encouraging is if you really look at the statistics on what our domestic violence unit does, you know, every day, that it says that, you know, we're looking at it and we're responding in the best way that we can based on best practices on domestic violence response.
Is it fair to say that through the new practices and best practices that you get fewer repeat offenders?
That's a tough question. A few years ago, I enlisted to help, I think Dr. Walsh was there then, I enlisted to help with Pittsburgh State to do a survey on our domestic violence victims going back three years and to see if advocacy helped break the cycle of domestic violence. And at that report, it was really astonishing to see that with significant advocacy, you can break the, the cycle of domestic violence because we're empowering victims of domestic violence. That's one of the things you get when you have a full-time advocate that can not only talk to the victim the day after an incident, but six months down the road and pick up the phone and say, hey, how's it going? What can I do for you? So I do see that, that we are breaking the cycle to some extent, but domestic violence is going to be with us for a long time to come.
I do not doubt that, but I'm glad to hear that they're taking proactive steps to prevent crime before it happens and not just reacting to it. I think that's something that...
It was really eye-opening, the report we got from Pittsburgh State, and it was one of their interns that provided that. The intern shadowed with our DB advocate at the time. And it was really astonishing to see how past victims were faring two years down the road and how they really counted their success because of that consistent advocacy. So it's, it's a powerful program, one that hopefully is within the Pittsburgh Police Department for many years to come.
Thank you for that. I think education, especially like you mentioned, larceny being a lot of our young residents, it's a good thing to get out there and talk to them about the consequences of their actions and sort of how these things develop and make sure that they get the help they need.
And that's why I've really tried hard to double down on our efforts with our school resource officers. You know, we can't make those relationships early enough, you know, and, and I, and I know my captains feel the same way, that, that making those relationships may break that cycle of youthful offenders, maybe seeing us as allies. So we're just, we're looking outside the playbook at all different options to make this city a better place. So it's all these, these programs that are contributing to the success that we have seen.
Thank you, Chief. I yield the floor.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to commend you on your community involvement, you and your offices. I was just thinking of the highlight of after the George Floyd murder, how you brought the, you helped to bring the community together, and that was really a highlight for me. And it was just, it turned out to be a great day for the city. So I just thank you for all your service.
Thank the Pittsburgh Police Department. It takes a team to do this, and we are a team there. And I feel very confident that when my time comes to an end as chief, that we're going to continue in this fashion because we've got some exceptional people at that police department.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I yield the floor.
So I'd just like to start off with a couple of, I guess, kind of technical points that I want to emphasize from what the chief and my fellow councilors have said about the statistics in the report. Because I'm not a data analyst, but I have tried hard over the course of my life to learn how to read data properly. And something, two things that I think are important to remember, and one of the reasons that we don't really look at year over year as the primary metric compared to a five-year or 10-year trend, is that if you see any kind of social science data, and the numbers all go in one direction with no variation, no spikes, no blips, you're looking at made-up data. It doesn't happen in real life. There's always going to be years, you know, a downward trend with years that go up, or an upward trend with years that go down. That just happens. That's, real life is messy. And that doesn't mean that our overall trend of, of crime reduction is any less valid just because we saw a small increase year over year. It's equally important, I think, to note that once you get to a small enough base number, looking at percentages starts to be misleading. Because if you have, and I'm not saying we're quite there yet, but if you have a small town where there, where in 2023 there were two homicides, and then in 2024 there are three, that's a 50% increase. That doesn't mean that that small town has all of a sudden, you know, gone wild. You can't overstate the significance of changes in small numbers. And the smaller our numbers get due to the diligent work of our police department, the more misleading small increases are going to look if you look at them solely in terms of percentages. I'm very encouraged by this report. I think the police department has done a great job and continues to do a great job. I'm very grateful for your years of service, Chief. And in particular, I just noticed tonight, you know, I've seen it before, but I wanted to call it out. You know, you're a pretty serious person when you're talking about your job, Chief, but, but to see you talking about the, the domestic violence efforts that you've been making and the successes you've been having, I'm not sure if you even realize quite how much your face lit up when you were talking about that. It's inspiring to see how enthusiastic you and the rest of your department are about finding, you know, new ways, creative ways, any ways to actually solve problems instead of just, you know, massaging numbers and, you know, kicking the can down the road. You're, there are real changes happening in the city of Pittsburgh, and a lot of them are attributable to the work that you and your department do. And so I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Cragan?
Just really quick, because it's the second bite of the apple, but I, I'm just reflecting back on the things that I've asked of Pittsburgh Police Department, and you guys have just come through, and it's all been projects with kids. And the dog license poster contest, which we will have again next year, I remember, I don't know, giving you guys 500 drawings and just letting, letting it go. But you know what? It, the impression the kids have is that you, you know, the police, the local police are there for them. And, you know, the last veteran salute to the Civil War soldiers at Forest Hill Cemetery where, you know, Noah's Ark was just over the hill, there was that much rain. And we're still reflecting at the cemetery department on how amazing it was, you know, to do these, these community projects. And the work you do every day is incredibly important and valid and researched and, and resourced and proven. So allegations to one side, you know, that stuff's all happening, but it's, the stuff that I, that makes me just smile and, you know, love it, is just seeing, you know, the response of the kids when we do the dog license poster contest, and they get their trophies, and they get to, you know, present their, their work and help the city themselves. Because you're a police department that helps Pittsburgh help ourselves. How great is that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief, and I want to thank the counsel to my left for bringing up the moment after George Floyd passed and the work that you and your department did. That was one of Pittsburgh's finer moments in recent memory, thanks to Pittsburgh's finest. So, thank you.
Just to comment on that quickly, one of the most important aspects to modern-day policing is creating trust and legitimacy in the community. And I think on that day, when we had 3,000-plus people in the city that could have turned really violent, we created that type of trust, and it's paid dividends. So having a local police department that has established trust and legitimacy like the Pittsburgh Police Department goes a long way. And those numbers are not reflective in a report. You know, we cannot police 42,000 people with 82 cops. It takes 42,000 people to partner with the police to create a safe, safe environment and safe city. Thank you for bringing that up.
I yield the floor.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the other thing that I wanted to comment on is the, the efforts at, at hiring a diverse police force that reflects the, the community. And I, and I think that the number of women that you've hired, the number of racial and ethnic minorities that you've hired, it truly does reflect what's going on in the city. And, and the fact that you've, you have school resource officers, you have a full-time clinician, you have a full-time domestic violence person, community engagement unit, all of those things lend to, to, to really the police department becoming part of the community. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any further questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Chief.
May I approach?
Oh, certainly. Absolutely.
I have this counsel, Boshman, specifically for you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Is it autographed?
If any other counsel would like a hard copy, please drop me an email because I will forget after tonight, and I will get a hard copy. And once again, to the viewing public, this annual report, now that it's been submitted to our councilors, will be available for public view. And if you are curious on looking at other gateway cities, I will put our annual report up against any gateway city in the state of Massachusetts. Thank you again for your time, councilors.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
I've got it here.
Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee met on October 9th. I chaired in lieu of Counselor Jeanine Hawley. We took up three items. 17924, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration in the approximate amount of $259,825 for Phase One to reconstruct the main apron. This is for design and permits. That was unanimously approved. 18024, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of E911 support and incentive grant funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the approximate amount of $219,594 for the purpose of supporting salaries of the city's dispatch call-takers. That was unanimous. 18124, order that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $48,000, same to be charged against FY25 tax levy and credited to police equipment and repair, firearm replacement, and that was unanimous.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and second to accept on the motion.
I was just seconding.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Sorry. I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Finance Committee. Any objections? It is unanimous. The Legislative Affairs Committee met earlier this evening and took up six items. Items 09723, a petition to review municipal employee disclosure. 27023, Counselor Fleming on behalf of Ward 5 residents to relocate the election polling site. 16724, my motion on behalf of the Veteran Service Commissioner to designate that position as special municipal employee. And Councilors Cruz, Cragan, and Walsh to adopt a fee structure for public records request. Those were all unanimously held in committee. And then 16624, Liz Murphy to amend Chapter 44 of the city code to add the following position, municipal hearing officer pursuant to general laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, was unanimously approved. And 17724, to designate that new position as a special municipal employee, was unanimously approved.
Counselor Boshman?
On the designated that person to be a special employee, are we going to be given a stipend, or are they going to get the pay, regular pay for this job?
That's in, that is the subject of the amendment in 16624. They will receive a $200 a month stipend plus $80 per case that they handle. It is non-benefited, non-union. Further questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve from 1097-23 to 167-24.
All right. Do I have a second on that? I have motion and second to approve the recommendation of the committee on all items excluding 167-24.
176-24, sorry.
Sorry, 176, thank you. Is there any objection? It is unanimous. 176-24.
Are we accepting the report, or are we...
Accepting the report and recommendations.
Okay.
176-24. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the chair and the committee members for holding this at my request when I was at the meeting earlier. I do just want to say to those who weren't there, to my fellow colleagues, and reiterate that what was held because of the work we're exploring with both our clerk, legal office, and anyone who knows interested, the options that we do have. But we held it to leave it on the table to continue the conversations about how best to address what has become a very serious public nuisance for our residents and our employees. And I encourage anyone who'd like to do this further to work with, with me on it and with my colleagues on it who have co-petitioned, because I think it's something that we need to address rather urgently to help the city run better, help all of our residents, all of our residents get the, the work that they need and the resources that they need from our employees and those who volunteer here and do the hard work that it takes every day to run a city. So even though it's been held, I do want to reiterate that it's something, however we do determine the best way to move forward, it's something that we need to do together and expeditiously. I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I agree.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
I have motion and second to recommend, to accept the recommendation to hold. Any objections? All right, that is also held in committee. We have an ordinance in final reading. If there is no objection, I will waive reading the actual text. This is the solar moratorium.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to put 18324 through its third and final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Any objections to passing this at this time? Seeing none, it is unanimous. And I'd like to thank the Shea Street Neighborhood Group again. And speaking for myself at least, we will, I will definitely be in touch regarding all the information you've gathered as we seek to craft a sound and equitable zoning ordinance regarding this matter going forward.
Mr. President?
Go, go ahead.
Would it be beneficial to share with them the city council website that takes it to all of us, send it to all of us?
Oh, certainly, yes. You can, you can send that, actually, you can send that to the city clerk, just cityclerk@fitchburgma.gov, and that will then get distributed to the You can also, of course, reach out through any other means. Last on our agenda, we have 07824. This is a somewhat large, well, not large, but a somewhat significant correction of the, I'm sorry, I'm losing where my ordinances are, Section 16958 of the city code. As had been mentioned at previous meetings, there were some elements of it that were not in line with the existing citation books that our police and parking employees use to issue tickets. It turns out that due to that, the existing citation books will not be able to be used to issue parking viol- to issue parking violations as we get into the snow season. This has nothing to do with the increase in the snow parking fine that we voted on that I know occasioned some debate. This is necessary to enable us to fine people at all for parking in a snow parking ban or other important parking issues. There are wrong-way parking needed to be fixed. I forget the full list, I don't have it in front of me, but there were a number of citation codes and types that were not actually provided for properly in the ordinance. So what I'm asking is first, a suspension of the rules so that we don't have to send this through committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Is there any objection? This would require a two-thirds vote. Is there any objection? All right, the matter is before us. What you have on your agenda, the printed text on the agenda itself, is an emergency preamble. Under state statute and our charter, we can, we cannot pass an ordinance at the first meeting in which it is introduced unless it is deemed by a two-thirds vote of the council to be an emergency affecting the health and safety of the populace. This emergency preamble outlines exactly what that health and safety emergency is, at least in my view, and what I am asking the council to agree to. If the council, in fact, is inclined to agree that this is a health and safety emergency, we need to take a separate vote on that first before we can then vote on the ordinance itself.
Make that motion that we take this up as a health and safety issue for the people of Pittsburgh.
I was taking that.
All right, I have a motion and second. Due to the sort of procedural novelty of this particular issue, I'm going to ask that we do this as a roll-call vote.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Bozeman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeanette Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming, he's not here. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Vian Hasing?
Yes.
That passes by 10 members.
All right. And that having been passed, we can, I'll take any questions or comments on this matter, but we are actually enabled to pass this at a single session, all three readings. Counselor Cruz, then I've got Counselor Green.
So it's my understanding that we're voting to, even though it's changing all of the fines in a snow emergency in the books, we're still, it's still in effect, the number one reason is to increase the fine to $100?
No, no, I'm sorry, Counselor, that's, if I misunderstood, if I explained it poorly. The issue would exist whether or not we had increased the fine. We discovered that there were a number of fines, including the snow parking emergency, that were incorrectly listed in the text of the ordinance and made our existing citation books potentially invalid. And under state statute, we actually have to have an accurate and valid citation book in order to issue these fines at all. So the effect of not passing this tonight, or while not passing it at all, would be that we would not be able to ticket anyone at all for, well, actually, I think for most of our parking violations, including any fine at all for snow and ice emergencies, even if we went back down to $30.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
No, no problem. Counselor Green?
Passing this tonight, how quickly are we looking at getting the new citation books printed and then issued?
Either of you? Always welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to defer this to Captain Jeanine, who's worked closely with Solicitor Mead in the mayor's office. He has greater information on it, so I'll defer this to the captain.
Welcome, Captain.
Good evening, everyone. I'll take this opportunity, real quick before I answer your question, to thank President Zarella and City Clerk Bala. I came, I noticed this problem when I was researching another issue. I first emailed City Clerk Bala on September 26th. September 27th, I was already in touch with President Zarella, and with less than three weeks, we have it here before you tonight. And we felt this was an urgent issue because it can start snowing anytime, and the snow ban is really one of the populist tickets that we write year-round for emergency reasons, and we need to be able to do that. So the tickets are actually printed out of the treasurer's office, and Treasurer Horn said, as soon as it passes here tonight, we'll get on that tomorrow.
And with the ability of that, that's going to address then all of the other description of the violation, plus the, if there is, if it was a new fine that needed to be increased, have that new fine and...
Correct. The ordinance that you all voted on in March, I believe, to change fine amounts, that has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight. This is just to make sure our parking tickets match what the ordinance does so we can enforce the ordinance that you have already passed to the council.
And then do you have a sense of how quickly that, those books will be able to be printed?
Within a couple of weeks, is what I've been told.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second, just to reiterate, both for the council and the viewing public, this, this will constitute a motion to pass this bill through all three And this will be, oh, actually, because we put this in earlier as a less extensive amendment to fix a smaller numbering issue, I would like to first entertain a motion to amend 07824 to reflect the most recent wording included in the packet.
So moved.
First reading last minute?
Second.
Right, we did a first reading of the original version, yes.
And so that's why this one's amended?
Mm-hmm. So I have a motion, second, this is the vote to amend to reflect the larger number of changes, all of which, again, are clerical in nature. Any objections to the amendment? All right, now we have it before us as amended, and I believe I would, I forget who made the motion, but could someone renew the motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve as amended. This will put it through all three readings in a single session to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Do I have any objection to the passage of this ordinance?
No.
All right, it passes unanimously, and that concludes our business for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.